The workshop for April twenty six, two thousand twenty one with our favorite city commissioner from District Four coming in. Thank you. Okay, Roy.
Okay.
Yeah. Any questions on any regular meeting agenda items? I didn't have any.
No.
No? Okay, then go to item. You want to do the compensation study?
Yes, sir. We'll go ahead and ask the HR director and our consultant to come up. As you know, this is actually something that you approved too early back. This was this this project on hold when we got into COVID. The other project was on hold. And then in the early fall of twenty twenty, we didn't like the employees. So this is gonna be our first workshop trying to get something approved. You had it on the regular agenda just because we thought it would be interesting to do. But if we don't make a decision today, this is a topic that we can, you know, spread out.
Would would some things require budget amendments?
Well, you said that we need to split it.
Yeah.
Because we're finishing at this point, our plan would be to do October first.
Okay.
So like you don't need a budget amendment.
Okay.
Unless it's an admission, something that propels you to do it sooner.
Yeah. And and I think of that because there's a lot on the plate and new people. So maybe there's a advantage of doing it right now and there's a advantage of waiting until the budget process time.
And you know, we could do also, depending on how well we do revenue wise going down the road, we may decide to take a chunk out of it this year. But but our plan is October first.
I saw that new fund balance.
Pretty good.
Pretty healthy.
Jeff. Oh, there you go. So I got Jeff and Christina. And you want to introduce your.
Yes, so good evening, Mayor Commission. My name is Christina Fuentes, Director of Human Resources. You all know Mr. Johnston, of course. And today we have Russell Campbell, Senior Vice President of Management Advisory Group, the company that conducted the compensation study here with us today. And we're here to give you a brief report on the compensation study. So we'll be explaining the factors that led to the decision to have a compensation study. We'll explain to you what the project entailed and what the results showed, as well as provide you with some options for implementation for your consideration. Three years ago, we came to you because we had a concern about employee turnover. So at the time, we had seen an upward trend in the employee turnover. And while a healthy turnover is between seven to ten percent, in two thousand eighteen, we had reached a high of fifteen point five percent. So this prompted us to look closely into our workforce and the reasons why employees were leaving.
One of the things you may remember is when we presented several years ago, we took several different factors and we looked at how those were were being felt by the employees within the city. There were a total of eleven different areas that we looked at when we went through the study. We did an internal review to see how we were doing and how those different factors were being felt by the different generations in the workforce. You may remember that discussion here about two years ago. And and so we want to go into some of that now.
So we determined that we were behind our peers in a couple of areas, vacation days, holidays, things like that. And we also noted that we wanted to do a salary study to see if we needed to make any salary adjustments within the organization. You responded to the significant challenge by entering into a seven-year plan. And in two thousand nineteen, you approved a two percent COLA, three additional floating holidays, approved us to proceed with the salary study, as well as look into some sort of longevity pay.
When can we ask questions? I I had a question on this floating holidays. Are people taking them? Don't they can't sell them back, right? They can only sell back vacation days? And so they're taking their holidays?
They are. I would need to look into specifics for you, but I know that they they're they've been very appreciative so far of all the holiday additional floating holidays that they've.
How does that affect the city operations?
I mean, I haven't heard anything negative.
You would think it would, because otherwise you don't need that guy that day. Why do you need him? I I'm not being facetious. I I would think that it has some effect on on city operations, especially in where you have somebody that has to operate that machine that day and everybody depends on that person being there to do their own other work.
Last year, we did propose a two percent COLA, an additional floating holiday, and adjustments to the vacation day scale. While you were unable to approve the two percent COLA, you did approve a one and a half percent one-time adjustment in addition to the other items.
So in essence, here on this slide, we're just we're just taking you back to this original group. You can see on the holidays and vacation, what we see now is that that we've moved, kind of moved where we are. So you're seeing on the screen a little bit more green than you saw red previously. The benefit to that now is that the employees, everything that's yellow there means we're at par with with surrounding cities. And so what you're now seeing is a more comfortable environment for the employees in relation to nearby cities.
We now find ourselves in year three of the seven-year plan. And so we wanted to just tell you a little bit about what we have seen recently and provide you with our recommendation. So the good news is that we have started to see a decline in our employee turnover. As you can see, in two thousand nineteen, we did we did see a significant drop. We are trending currently to end the year at about eleven point eight percent. But our work is not done. Our goal still remains to be at the healthy rate between seven to ten percent.
So one of the things that we looked at, if you remember last year, we talked to you a little bit about the reason that employees were leaving. And I know it's a little bit hard to see on the screen, but if you've got your document there in front of you, one of the things that we found is that we had twenty-eight percent of the workforce that was saying they were leaving us for a better opportunity. Now, we had a big chunk, that big dark blue area, thirty-two percent, that were leaving for an unknown reason. And what you see now in two thousand twenty is that we've done a better job of of really getting additional information from the employees. We see that that better opportunity has increased now from twenty-eight to thirty-four percent. But you'll see the unknown has shrunk from thirty-two to twenty-eight. And in essence, what we see is that the the number is about the same. We we still have folks that are leaving for better opportunities. We also saw a slight increase in retirements in two thousand twenty. We believe that had to do in large part to the pandemic and employees that decided that it it was just time to go. But in short, two thousand twenty still still saw more employees leaving the city to pursue what they perceive to be better opportunities elsewhere. In addition to that, we had separations. The next slide is separations by generation. In two thousand nineteen, you recall that over half of the folks that were leaving were millennials, that age group that's twenty-four to forty-two. What you see now in two thousand twenty is that that group has shrunk a little bit in size. We think that now some of the newer employees that are coming to the city are are happier with what they're seeing in the city. You're also gonna see a little change, which is that green piece of the pie up there, which is now Generation Z, that twenty-four and below group, which really has us now with a a large number of different generations in the workforce. Four percent of our separations in two thousand twenty were from that new generation. And then finally, the next slide, separation by years of service. In two thousand nineteen, we showed you that about a third of our separations were two- to-five-year employees, while just over forty percent had under one year of service. And what we're seeing now in two thousand twenty is a change in that our two-to-five-year employees are sticking around a little bit longer now, which is what we want. We are seeing now forty-eight percent of our less-than-one-year employees. It's it's getting close to fifty percent of the newer employees. But those that have experience and have several years with the city are deciding to stay put. And that's that's really what we wanted. Remember, too, that we were targeting that two-to-five-year group with some of the holidays and floating holiday changes that we made before.
Jeff, on the on the better opportunity, was that for the like like other government employment? Or was it to go to the private sector?
Combination of all of the above. And so with that, we want to take an opportunity. I'm gonna let Russell talk to you a little bit about the compensation study itself and the the process that we went through as we did this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners. I'm Russell Campbell, one of the senior VPs with Management Advisory Group. I was part of the project team that led this particular project. What I want to do this afternoon is talk about some of the specifics in terms of the methodology and approach that we used to put the study together. Also talk about what we found in terms of comparison in the marketplace. And just share some anecdotal comments with relation to where the city currently is and where it needs to go. Before I get started, I do want to go back to two slides that were shown earlier. The first slide I want to talk about is the one that talked about turnover. And it showed that there was about a four-and-a-half increase in turnover from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, which obviously was alarming. It seemed to come down a little bit to around thirteen point six percent in two thousand nineteen. But I think you should put an asterisk by two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. Two thousand twenty in the spring is when the COVID pandemic took place. There was virtually no hiring. At its peak, the national unemployment rate hovered around fifteen percent. Claims for unemployment insurance benefits were at an all-time high, some of the highest on record. So I think when we take that in consideration, there were folks who were wanting to pursue other opportunities, but they had no opportunities to pursue because no one was doing any hiring. It will be two thousand twenty-two before you really get a sense of where you are with your turnover situation. Second slide that caught my attention was the one that talked about thirty-five percent of the people in two thousand twenty seeking other opportunities. Let's let's not kid ourselves. When we say seeking other opportunities, by and large, the majority of those folks left for money. Whether it was an advancement to assume a high-level position, that comes with more money. Some people left for a lateral move because they offered more money. And so that is another trend that's alarming going forward. As we started to look at the market data and assess where the city stood in the marketplace, I'd ascertain you're somewhere around the sixty-five percentile. In order to be competitive, you need to be between the seventy-fifth and eighty eightieth percentile. So we put together a salary structure that will bring you at about the seventy-sixth percentile, which should allow you to compete with the regional players in the area and allow you to build the type of labor force that you need to continue to serve the citizens of this fine community. So project focus, let's talk a little bit about the specifics of of what we did. We conducted a review of all the positions that were relative to the study. We did not include fire and police, correct?
Correct.
We reviewed information from over a dozen different organizations, cities, counties. And we're gonna share with you that specific list as we go through the presentation. And by the way, if you want to ask questions as I talk, that's perfectly acceptable. We wanted to put together a new compensation plan that would address retention and recruitment. If your pay plan is competitive, probably seventy percent or more of the people you hire, you're gonna be a hire be able to hire them somewhere around the minimum salary level. The minimum salary is indicative of someone who is new into that career field or that occupation, who still needs some seasoning in terms of training and development, but they meet the bare minimums of the qualification in terms of education and some relevant experience. Those that are fully proficient in a particular occupation or skill set are gonna command a higher salary beyond the minimum. And you want to bring them in somewhere between the minimum and the midpoint or the market rate based on whatever your compensation policies suggest. Typically, we see organizations recommend bringing those experienced, proficient folks in who exceed the minimum qualifications, somewhere in about ten to twelve percent above the entry level. Under no circumstance should you bring in a new employee, I don't care how experienced they are, above the midpoint or the market point. All right? We put together an implementation strategy that we thought was an effective use of 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 resources, knowing that most local governments around the country are still trying to recover from the pandemic. So tax bases are low, sales tax collections are a little bit low. But you still have to meet the demands of service delivery. And in order to do that, you've got to have competent qualified people. So we put together an implementation strategy we think addresses those two objectives, being able to find the right people, bring them on board, would be good stewards of taxpayer money. And we put together a process in terms of policies and administrative guidelines, along with our software, that will help the HR department evaluate new positions going forward, as well as to handle reclassifications that may come about if duties and responsibilities are changed or shifted for a given position.
Guys, a question?
Yes.
When I was reading it, and I don't know if I apologize if we had this breakdown, but I was wondering if there's a difference between, say, the office personnel and the labor personnel in the city, if that was ever broken down from that standpoint?
Yes. And and I was gonna address that in a moment, but I'll go ahead and take that. When you do a compensation classification study, there are two tenants you have to address. The first one is known as internal equity, where you're ranking the jobs within the organization, building a hierarchy, identifying the most complex job based on duties, responsibilities, qualifications, and then in descending order, identifying the lesser level jobs. And so we use a point factor process to do that. In other words, we've got fourteen set of 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 criteria that we look at and assess against every job. And we assign a difficulty rating that ranges from one to ten in each one of those fourteen categories. As we do that, we're able to build a hierarchy showing the highest-pointing job, which is gonna be the most complex based on our our process. And then we'll show all those jobs in between, as well as the lowest. That is how we differentiate between an office position and a labor position.
But but when we're doing a, and we essentially do based on a COLA, you know, three percent across the board, you may not be addressing a particular problem because it's a three percent across-the-board situation. So how do you how do you rectify that if you're trying to?
Our process is setting the baseline in terms of going forward and maintaining the structure. A cost-of-living adjustment does not differentiate upon the nature of the jobs. But to be fairly, from an academic standpoint, a cost of living really in the pay raise. It's a hedge against the cost of inflation. If I went out today and bought twenty items at the local Publix, based on the theory of cost-of-living adjustment, I should be able to go out next year and buy the same twenty items, and my pay should have been indexed to the rate of increase in those twenty items, by theory. But as we commonly know it today, most municipal governments use a COLA as a form of a general increase or or pay raise, which we do support. What we would like to see added to that is some money set aside for merit. One of your biggest problems here, one of your biggest complaints for the employees is, okay, you bring me in at 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 salary X, but other than a COLA, I really don't progress through the salary range. And in local government, there's only two ways to do that, cost of living and some form of merit. So if you can set aside some for merit, that will allow some salary growth and progression going forward. A couple of quick things that we did not address in the study. We did not tell people what we were trying to do. We did not make any commentary on restructuring or redesigning any departments. We didn't make any commentary on whether or not some parts were properly staffed or understaffed. We did not guarantee that everyone would be entitled to a pay for pay raise as it relates to this process. And third, we didn't recommend decreasing anyone's salary as it relates to the study. In terms of the scope of the project, full-time, part-time, noncivil service positions, as I said, we we exclude the public sector. There are approximately sixteen hundred positions, our people, and four hundred and fifty job titles that comprise the study.
Is that a lot for sixteen hundred or no?
That's about in ballpark what we typically see. We captured employing data in terms of what they're actually doing in terms of their duties and responsibilities by reviewing their existing job descriptions, which were current, up to date. We had organizational charts from all the city departments. We had policies, procedures, and guidelines from the departments, as well as HR. And and any anecdotal information that HR could provide was all taken into consideration to do that internal equity analysis that I talked about earlier. Again, goal being to address recruitment and retention going forward. We specifically wanted to get some in uh feedback from department heads about some of the challenges they may have with certain jobs in their departments in terms of recruitment, retention, and recruitment. And so we put together an administrative issues forum. We distributed those to employees where the department heads, excuse me, they had the opportunity to make us aware of specific positions that they were having difficulty recruiting or holding on to people. And so we wanted to make sure we had that type of information as a part of the analysis to make sure that we addressed those concerns. And then also, if there were any reclassification requests that were submitted to HR prior to the start of the study, we wanted that information, as well as any new positions that may be created or any restructuring that was already approved, we wanted to have that information as we went through. As best practices says, you should not have to do this process again for another five or six years. In the interim, we've suggested that HR conduct maybe quarterly surveys of different job families to see if there are significant movements out in the labor market. But in terms of a comprehensive overview, you shouldn't have to do that for every five or six years. So I'm gonna talk in a moment about some of the organizations that we 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 surveyed and looked at. We call them competitors, because they're drawing from, in many cases, the same labor pool that you're looking into to hire. And so we definitely had to make sure that we address those. There are multiple municipalities and counties and special purpose districts out there that we can look at. But we had a targeted approach to identifying those cities and counties that we felt were relevant in terms of who you compete with. Some of the criteria we looked at, geography or from a regional standpoint, those organizations that were within a reasonable commute. Most people will commute reasonably speaking up to an hour, maybe a little bit more, particularly if they don't have to physically relocate and the money's better, that they're willing to make that extra drive. We also take things in consideration, like size of the workforce of the other organizations. We look at things like population of the community. We look at cost-of-living indexes in some of the other communities. We look at other communities that, whether it's real or not, but there's a perception that they are one of the better employers when it comes to pay and benefits. And so all those things are factored into the analysis as we identify what organizations we're gonna compare you to. Now, we did not force the list of survey respondents upon the city. We developed an initial list. We provided that to administration to review, provide feedback. And we came to a happy medium on a final list of organizations that we wanted to look at, look at. And I talked about looking at the classifications to make sure that job duties and responsibilities appropriately match their job type. As organizational grows, some jobs evolve. Some people take on greater responsibilities, some may lose some responsibility. And we want to make sure from a best practices standpoint, their title is appropriate for the position. When we found situations like that, we did make a recommendation for a more more appropriate title. There was only a handful of those situations as it laced its standards. And so in summary, this process takes into consideration internal equity, external equity being the market data. And then we calculate the cost of transition folks over to the new compensation system that we provide. And this is just kind of a overview of the process that I just went through. So we skip down. Target agencies here are the organizations that we looked at. The ones with the asterisk by them, those are organizations that had utility components to them. And so that is why they have the asterisk. But you'll see, we got Amarillo, Brownsville, Brownsville Utilities, Cameron County, Carlton, Corpus Christi, Enberg, La Paso, Grand Prairie, Lago County, Colleen, Laredo, Lubbock, McKellen ISD, McKennie, Mission, Pasadena Park, Round Rock, South Texas College, and the University of Texas, Rio Grande. If we talk about local employers or regional employers or competitors, you'll see the list there starts with, obviously, Brownsville is very close by. So is the Utilities operation down in Brownsville, Cameron County, Mission, FAR. And I mentioned the others earlier.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
When we have the statistics on people leaving, do mostly for other public sector jobs? Or do we keep track of that private versus public?
I don't think tracked that way, but I would say, and Christina knows better than I do, I think it's a combination of both.
It's a combination. We don't have a breakdown specifically as to public sector versus public sector, but it is a combination of both.
We are losing some of the private sector.
So I think that will be important to know, because if we're competing with the private sector, I mean, there's really no competition there because they're obviously gonna be paying a lot more. But if they're going to other government agencies, and that's kind of what what we really care about, because that would be our main competitors.
Well, the good thing about the study is that we don't we do very little comparison to the private sector. I mean, we're doing comparisons to public sector, so if we're underpaid, we're underpaid. Right?
Yeah, no, I agree. But I I think reason for leaving is worth asking. Are you leaving to the public sector or to the private?
And what are?
Just to get a percentage of.
And what's the highest city that takes our employees?
For compensation.
Not for a compensation study, I think just to see.
Oh, just generally speaking.
Yeah, just generally speaking. It's easy data to acquire.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you just put that on exit interview checklist. But doesn't make a real difference or impact, no. You're so far behind the public sector, whether they're leaving for the private sector, it's kind of a mute point. The other thing I would raise, I've done this work for eighteen years. And I also do some statistical analytical stuff that talks about the work environment. And I've gone in and assessed the workforce and and what they're content or discontented about in terms of the the organization they work for. And I've done about two hundred of those types of 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 assessments around the country. And I've found that the top five reasons people leave, pay will always be in the top five, but it's not always number one. Sometimes it's security, job security, retirement, advancement opportunity. They like their leadership, their supervisor or manager. And and some other times, it's it's a matter of 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 safety or benefits. And so pay alone does not indicate whether someone leaves or stays, but it will always be in the top five as a consideration. Some of the organizations were considered more statewide that we looked at, either based on either cost of living, similarities, size of workforce, population, other demographics that were comparable in terms of why they made the list.
So what did the market data tell us?
Well, it told us two things. Number one, you have a salary compression issue. What is salary compression? In a nutshell, if I've been an employee for one year and Christina comes to HR and says, Russell was hired about a year ago, and I've been here four years, but our salaries are separated by fifty bucks, that's salary compression. When you have people with varying years of tenure, salaries all clustered around the bottom, there's very little difference between them. And so that is an issue. And again, I said in the beginning, you've got to have a mechanism to move people forward within the range so that new hires are not gonna come in making the same, or in some cases, a little bit more than folks that have been here for a couple of years. So that's what we call salary compression. There's a presence of that throughout the department, some worse than others, which leads, obviously, to low morale and can affect turnover. But on the minimum end, entry-level salaries, the city was behind the marketplace about four point nine-nine percent, or if we rounded out, five percent. On market averages or midpoints, you're almost behind twelve percent. And at the top end of the salary scale, you're behind sixteen point nine, or just under seventeen percent. So we were close on the starting salaries or entry level, but there was great disparity at the market average or midpoint, as some people refer to it, and the max.
Can you? Well, I just wanted clarification on that, because it seems like the the minimum is at entry level?
At entry level.
Okay, so then what is midpoint again?
Midpoint is considered the market average. If we looked out in the marketplace, we surveyed twelve organizations, and we found that, on average, an engineer makes seventy thousand dollars a year, or their pay scale pays seventy thousand dollars on average for an engineer. That's the market average or the midpoint.
So then the minimum of four point nine-nine, that means that we're, let's say, five percent below. Are we comparing are we comparing with other municipalities or or marketplace?
Those list of organizations that I previously talked about, those are the ones we're comparing.
Yeah, that's kind of the question I had. Do you would you know how these comparison percentages would change if we eliminated, let's say, target markets, I don't know, a hundred fifty miles away, and only did what would be the Rio Grande Valley, right? Would our minimum be more in line? Would our maximum drop by half? Because when you Round Rock, you know, I know Round Rock, I mean, it's pretty pricey to live there. And then I I just don't know how some of the, I know Amarillo might be. I really am not familiar with some of the other ones as far as overall cost of living and what the what the government's revenues are as well, right, compared to ours?
Right, right.
Commissioner, one of the things that we initially did way back when we started is you can't you can't have a a survey of cities and use that survey of cities. you can't have a survey of cities and use that survey of cities for all positions. It doesn't work. And so, you have a ladder in the organization, and I say it with all respect, the bottom of the ladder to the top of the ladder. So, the closer that you are to the bottom of the table of organization, the smaller the radius is of where your recruitment area is. The higher you go on that ladder, then the diameter gets greater. In other words, when we're looking for a department head, we're looking statewide.
I understand.
And so, that's what we had to do in order to ensure that we're, or to ensure, to the best that we could compared to the right, you know, to the right area.
The other thing that I want to point out...
But it's not a weighted average. So, how many department heads do we have of fourteen hundred employees? So you're averaging them with everyone else who's lower. So I wonder if those percentages, the majority of our employees do come from within a tighter radius, right?
Right, sure, of course.
So I was just wondering if that comparison would be more in line with our, what I would call our regional market of applicants?
Well, two things, you don't wanna put together a pay structure that has different criteria for different job groups. You don't wanna do that. The other thing is, keep in mind, these are averages. A place like Round Rock may have a higher cost of living, but there's some on that list that have a lower cost of living than you do, so it's averaged out. And then the other thing, we're not trying to cherry pick the hottest of the hot. It's an average. And the market data is to build the table, okay? Let's think of it as, we've got this table, and we've got grades, and we've got salary ranges all down this table. What determines where an employee's job falls on that table would be the actual duties and education requirements of that position. And so, if we look at it from that context, it balances itself out, because the driver is their actual duty. And I give you a great point. Last month, I was up in Virginia outside of Richmond, and I'll be quick. I was interviewing the fire chief, and we were going through his R chart, his budget, and I noticed he had another $600,000 sitting over here in fourteen FTEs that said animal control. And I was like, what is this, is typo? He goes, no, I've got animal control. And he was the fire chief. I've never seen a fire department be responsible for animal control. My point being, if we were just doing a market survey, comparing that fire chief with the other fire chiefs, we never would've found anybody else that had animal control. But because we put greater emphasis on the internal review based on what he's actually responsible for, that's what drives his salary range and grade recommendation. So the market data is a secondary, secondary determinant in terms of where we fall.
Does that tell us that the higher you go up the ladder, the more of a disparity there is?
No, this just says where you stand in relation to those other organizations we looked at. On average, the entry level salaries here, on average, are about 5 percent behind those group of municipal and county organizations.
But the midpoint is 12 percent.
You're 12, about 12, and the maximum is 12.
But midpoint is higher up in the ladder, isn't it?
Yes, it's halfway between the lower end and the top end.
Yeah, but I think you all are talking about two different ladders. So every position, yeah, every position has a range. Like, say, you know, HR director is in range X, and we have a minimum and a maximum pay. And that's what the minimum to maximum is. So it isn't the table of organization going up and down, it's the range of that pay.
Well, you don't have a mechanism, if she does a good, or he or she does a good job, they move them up that ladder outside of the COLA that we give everybody else, right? Generally?
Generally, that's true, but we actually do do adjustments. Performance based, yeah.
We don't really go over those too much in the budget, we leave that to your discretion. You know, I just gotta tell you about a mindset. Maybe it's because of years and years of doing collective bargaining. I feel like we're collective bargaining with management or something as elected officials. I don't know how to get over my mindset of, and I think it's, our position is to be really fair with our employees, at the same time being fair to taxpayers. You know, and so I'm trying to, I'm trying to resolve that eternally, because I wanna do both. But that means asking you questions, I hope they don't seem like we're in a collective bargaining situation.
Well, and I think we all want to get to as fair as possible. I mean, we don't wanna be, well, I do wanna be the best, but we don't have to be the best, but we certainly don't wanna be the worst. And so, what triggered all of this was what we experienced, like Jeff said three years ago. And I go back to your question there of, what is the impact of the floating holidays? I don't think that we have empirical data to answer that question, but what I would say is that in 2022, hopefully that number will go down, because I agree with Russell that these years, you can't use the data statistically. But I say happy employees are productive employees. And so, if you have productive employees, you're gonna start taking bigger loads. And so, that's what we're trying to do here, is that we're trying to get, I know it sounds really simple, but we're trying to get happy boys to stay.
Now, my other thing on the reasons for people leaving, I would like to know like where, where do they fall? So let's say like, do we have like, I don't know, from that percentage, we have X amount coming from like, from people that make from...
Oh, where they are in the organization.
In the position. So that way, we can be like, okay, so are we looking, are we losing people from the top of the barrel, the middle of the barrel, the bottom of the barrel? So that way, we know which one we're gonna be addressing first. Because if we're losing people from the bottom of the barrel, then that, those are our hands, you know?
Well, and a lot of this opportunity, when the oil field went boom, we lost a lot of people we didn't normally lose.
Right.
Well, we have that data, right? We can compile it, we have the data.
We have the data, yeah.
Because everybody that's exiting, we know exactly where we were, so...
We don't have it broken down like that right now.
Some of the stuff in seventeen and maybe not eighteen, but was oil field opportunity, I would think. Because we lost a lot of people, truck drivers and people we normally wouldn't use, lose, because the pay scales aren't, yeah, is wide.
Which city takes...
And that way, we can see where we have our deficiency the most. If it's like, at what level are we, and attack that one first, and then we'll...
I think that'd be interesting, yeah.
We'll move up.
Yes, sir.
What city do you think? Have you heard, parking I was talking?
I have raised my hand to the side of the audience. The data that you used, comp historical, in other words, is this data that you went out with over the last year, and you went to each of these state agencies or local target agencies and gathered? Or you went some other directory where you pulled out data? No, we contacted the organizations directly. So this is fresh within the last year? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Next line, please.
Veronica?
What city takes most of our employees, surrounding city?
Do you know that?
That's hard to say, because we, it just, it varies by the type of position. It's not a, it's not just a, it's the immediate surrounding cities, I would say, that we lose our entry level, mostly labor positions to. And so, they do go to other cities, I mean, we do see that. And, you know, the positions that have, you know, high turnover, we have seen are going to other cities. So I can't tell you one specific is the most, it just kind of is a surrounding area, yeah.
Do you have any media here?
I would've guessed Edinburgh.
If we had.
This is a real thing, okay? So, a lot of the cities around us spend more money on employees on a percent basis than we do. That's because we do a lot of things. We spend a lot of money on infrastructure. We do, you know, we've got the right equipment, so, you know, everything comes from the same pot. And so, I really think that our focus, and it's a good thing for our citizens, because we're focused on the right thing.
Yeah.
And our percent for pay is much less than others.
In a way, it's hard also to compare, because a lot of our cities, even some of the relatively larger cities, all their engineers are outside engineers, their attorneys are outside attorneys, and that, I don't know how you figure that into the, whether, you know, how that all works, but, so, and we lose, I think as they build, as they get a, not an IT department, as they get a public relations department like we have at station, they start hiring our people away as they get, as they, as they're growing, as they grow. There's more competition. But you also have to look at, I think, some of the professional ones, where they go outside almost for all, probably professional.
On the study results, that last table, it'd be good to have another column that says comparison in the market and then comparison to surrounding cities, like Sevi was alluding to, so that we know if that 5 percent is any higher or lower by comparison to Mission, Edinburgh, FAR, you know? Because there are immediate competitors in terms of taking from our employees.
From mostly organizations. Let me ask this, I think I saw the data where, when you went to the individual position, you showed who you compared it to, right?
Right.
So that's data that we have, I think we need to share that.
And I think I go back to my first statement. When we do collective bargaining, we always look at what the comparable is. We hired you to make sure that you protect, you do what we wanted to do, be fair to the employees, right? And so, you know, I know we're all questioning the comparisons, but that's why I was saying it's not collective bargaining. This is our expert, you're our expert, you're not the employee's expert, you're our expert.
I don't mind the questions, like I said, I've been doing this for a long time. And like I told someone just last Friday, I was doing work for another city in Texas. I don't have any relatives. No brother, no cousin, no sister. No one's giving me a shotgun or a watch, you know? The data is what it is.
You're not getting commission on the pay raises we're giving, right?
Exactly, the data is what it is, okay? So, key takeaway, trying to align the city with market, address outer compression. And what we've done is we've come up with one unified pay structure. In other words, we don't have a pay structure based on occupational groupings, like administrative jobs, maintenance jobs, operational positions, we have one unified plan. Now, those who may be familiar with how school districts work, in school districts, they have what they call a step plan, where you have grades vertical, and then go horizontally, you have step one, two, three, four, and five. Most local governments, cities and counties, have an open range, where you have a minimum, midpoint, and a max. That gives you better flexibility, because people can follow anywhere in between there. When you have a step plan, people have to follow on a finite step, and you always roll up, so it costs my money to maintain. So we got an open range, unified plan, everybody's on the same plan. And we heard from some that, because it's an enterprise fund, the utilities folks should be on their own plan. Poppycock, would never recommend it. I think it is divisive to say that one group, just because, to no reasoning of their own, they wind up in department, that's an enterprise fund. It is problematic now only from a morale standpoint. It also puts you in some uncomfortable territory. I know there's a lot of attorneys on the council here, a couple anyway. What happens if you have a position that exists on the utility side that also exists outside of utilities on another part? Or a job that's very comparable in terms of the duties and the qualifications? How do you justify paying, let's say a custodian? You have one in utilities and one in public works. How would you justify paying one more than the other, when the duties or qualifications are pretty much the same, but one just happens to work in a department that is revenue generating? It's hard, it's just not something that we've ever advocated for, and we will not ever advocate for that going forward. And we said that we would not do that, and we did not. We have a unified plan that takes in consideration the uniqueness of all the jobs and the market, and we think it's fair and it should stand according. Next line. So...
Oh, actually, this one would be...
What's that?
So he'll hear some of this.
Yeah, so if I could, you know, here you see the recommendation, I'm just gonna kind of go through what the final recommendation is. And you can see here, the recommended implementation is a total $3.8 million. This includes a 2% COLA this year across the board. This would include adjustments to minimum, as you saw in the presentation. This would also include adjustments for time and position up to a maximum of $3,500 for an individual employee. There's a breakdown there on the screen, you can see, so the general fund, there's $1.9 million. Fire would get 2%, that's $198,000 and some change. Police would be $616,000 and change. And then also, that you can see, their enterprise funds there would be at $1.1 million. Now, this is an all-in number, so this does include benefits. And if you're trying to do the math, the total for the general fund with this recommendation is Now, there's an option here, the next slide is gonna show, if you choose to break this up over a couple of years, there is an option, Christie, if you could change the slide for me right quick. Year one would be the 2% across the board COLA. This would also include the adjustment to minimum, but this would do half of the adjustment for time and position, and then push the second half of that adjustment over to year two.
Can I ask, what does time and position, is this a longevity pay, if you get five years?
It's similar, similar to longevity, but it gives credit for employees who have been in their position. Say somebody's been there 10 years, and then somebody else comes in and gets hired tomorrow. If you don't have some kind of a system to move people across their pay grades, then those two employees sit next to each other making the exact same salary, even though one's got 10 years' experience and the other doesn't. And so, it's similar in some ways to longevity, and that's one of the reasons, Mayor, you're gonna see here in, I think, two slides from now, we did not move forward with the longevity pay, but we'd like to review that further here, and we're gonna request authorization to continue looking at longevity specifically next year, because you could do some of what longevity would do with this plan by simply adding some funding for time and grade each year.
So you're saying longevity would be on top of the adjustments for time and position?
Potentially, that's what we wanna review. Just depends on if the city will commit to adjustments each year for time and grade. I mean, you can do either way. What's the difference, though, between time and position and longevity? Typically, what you'll see in fire and police departments, and there's some surrounding cities that give a specific amount of money each year, if you've got one year, then you get X number of dollars per year extra, because you've been here for a year. Year two, you get another fixed amount of money. If you do time and grade, that would be more based as a percentage of your current salary. And so, it's adjusted more based on where you are in the organization as far as the work chart.
And also, think about, I think we should think about it this way. We're doing a time and position, you know, part of the equation is time and position, and this is one time, okay? We're gonna do it once, and then as we have turnover, you know, that line starts getting blurry again. And so, longevity, which I've not been a proponent of much, you know, in my career, does that. Is, if you're not doing this study frequently, then you've got to at least consider longevity so that it takes care of that. Because, you know, year after year, you know, if we go another 10 years like we did the last time, we're gonna be in the same, same situation. Same situation. So, that's a reason to employ, yes, sir?
Just to bring a little clarity to the conversation, the time and position, when it comes to figuring out a way to address the salary compression issue, you've gotta find a macro formula to do that, that treats everybody fair. And so, there's only two mechanisms to do that. You can do it based on how long you've been with the organization, which is gonna be really costly, or you can do it based on how long you've been in your position. And it primarily applies to those individuals who are most negatively impacted currently as it relates to their pay in the market, they're furthest behind. It's helping those that are furthest behind. And even that, and I'm not a fan of just giving people money for showing up either, but the reason we do it, it's a fair way to do it, it's an economical way to do it, because we're doing it on time and position. And then we put a cap on it, we put a cap on it, because some people have been in their position 15, 16 years. So we put a cap on it. So no one would get more than $3,500 for time in position, period. Some people only got a hundred bucks, somebody got 300 bucks, but no one could go above $3,500 for time in grade.
The time and position obviously addresses the compression, right?
Yes, that's how we address salary compression.
Kind of like a reshuffling of the cards.
Exactly.
And I'm just gonna make one more point. So, it's real easy to look at the percentages that we saw at the beginning of the presentation and say 11%, 13%, and 15%, and so on. But at 15%, that's 300 employees in one year, okay? That's a lot of people going out the door and us having to rehire. So, keep that, you know, keep that in line, 10% is 200 employees. So, it's a lot of people.
Do you keep the same money in a pool, except you do time and position for, right now, your discretionary, if somebody's doing a really good job, you give them a little more bump than anybody else? So you have that in there too, in addition to time and position?
We have in there time and position just for the sake of implementing the pay stuff. As the gentleman here said, we're trying to shuffle, get everybody to a certain point. Then going forward, they should move based on COLA and merit. Now, there are some, you know, Texas communities, I just finished up a project for Galveston County, I'm in Wichita Falls now. There are some Texas municipal and county governments that do have longevity pay, that based on your anniversary date, depending on how long you've been with the organization, you get almost like a little bonus. My view, and I used to be an HR director, and when I tell clients who wanna do that, I'd like to see those as just a lump sum, it's not added to your base. If you've been here one to three years, you get a $500 check. You've been here six to 10, you may get a $1,000 check. For your loyalty to the organization. I like to see those as lump... For your loyalty to the organization. I like to see those as lump, lump, lump sum bonus.
We have longevity in the fire and police contracts.
Yeah, fire and police has that.
But they don't have lump sum. They get all the benefits. That's compounded.
Well, at the beginning, you mentioned that police and fire wasn't analyzed, but yet it's in the recommendation. Well, yeah, in the recommendation, so the current contracts for police and fire reflect that they get a portion of what we do in terms of across the board COLAs. And so what you'll notice on the slide that's on the screen right now, for year two, if you do a two-year, that number's pending simply because we've got collective bargaining agreements that are in progress right now. So we wouldn't be able to give you that number quite yet.
And that was another reason that Jeff and the HR director talked about October one. Obviously, we'd like to do it as soon as possible, but October one gets us past the collective bargaining agreements that we've got to do this year and we'll have a total budget figure for you so that you have the whole picture.
Because that's going to be money.
Yeah.
I would presume that's going to be money.
Yeah, so two more slides if I could. Second to the last one, I just wanted to show this chart again. This is, this chart actually has a couple of extra years. And so we had talked about cost of living adjustments. Part of the issue with doing the two percent cost of living adjustment this year is it moves us closer to what was found during the salary study. So it actually reduces the cost, if you will, of the salary study when you make that adjustment. But it's important to point out too, that as you have seen when we showed that seven-year plan, and that's actually the next slide I'll show in a second, is that cost of living adjustments are included each year. If you look on that chart, you're going to see that the city of McAllen currently sits right about the middle of the road when it comes to the last six years around the valley of cities and what they have done in terms of cost of living adjustments. There are a couple of communities that have literally done zero. And then you've got some communities that are in the seventeen percent area and McAllen sits at eight percent. So you would move that to ten if you were to do the cost of living adjustment here of two percent. And then the last slide that I'll show you here again, this is the proposal then, is that the request of staff is year three would show the two percent COLA, would implement the salary study and then make the adjustments, would extend that out into year four if we needed. We would continue to put the longevity pay in study mode and see if that's something that we can actually implement through the time and grade adjustments as we've discussed. And then this would show in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six is when we'd be looking to come back and do a refresh on the salary review to make sure that we're still on track with our surrounding neighbors.
Of course, you realize the city commission and the mayor haven't gotten a raise since nineteen twenty-seven.
I can fix that.
Now, Jeff, I mean, the cost of living, the city, the city adjustments, right? I mean, Edinburgh did seventeen percent and FAR did zero percent over five years or six years?
Yep.
But that still doesn't, that still doesn't give us an order of which cities pay more, right? I mean, the city could have done zero in five years, but they still pay more than we do. So we, our cost of living brought it up closer, or vice versa, right?
I think there's a couple of things that you could draw from that. One is, remember when we looked at market, we saw that overall, we're a little bit behind in terms of market. And so if you look at moving to minimum and you see that five percent difference, then if cities around us do a COLA and the city of McAllen doesn't, then that just increases that gap by that much and makes the issue that much more difficult. So if we're losing employees currently, I think the point I wanted to make with that.
Doesn't necessarily increase it in their favor. They could still be under us, right? Even if they increase their own COLA.
Right. And there are a handful of cities here also. The other thing that I'll mention, City of Brownsville did a comp study in twenty fourteen. City of FAR did a compensation study in twenty sixteen. So FAR did some adjustments to salary in twenty sixteen that weren't on a COLA, but they adjusted salaries based on their comp study. And we do know, Christina tells me every now and then, there's another city around us doing a compensation study. South Padre Island's in the middle of a study right now. So other cities are doing what we're doing here. And once we do adjustments, you're going to see other cities. There are a few cities that are looking at holidays. Some of the cities that were below us and are even further below us now are looking to make some adjustments. But if we're trying to keep our people here, we're going to need to make sure that we focus on.
When you do these studies, do you compare, because most cities have TMRS, right? Do you compare the TMRS rate? Because it could be a five percent, seven percent. That's a significant one too. I don't know if we do that.
Only if it's something that's specifically listed in the scope of services we look. But it's very, that's rare. They're talking about direct compensation.
And we did that more in that first chart, Mayor, that showed the different colored squares benefits was one of those categories that we looked at.
It's a big deal, especially if you do automatic, whatever you call them, what we tend to like, annual, you do an annual catch-up plus seven percent.
Yeah, so when we did the initial analysis that we brought to you, we did have that figure. And we were, we were, we were at the bottom. Every city around us either has the same or better in GMRS than McAllen. Yeah. Many cities have repeating updated service credits and repeating COLAs.
I'm going to tell you, TMS compared to anything around in the public sector, private sector is head and shoulders. I could show you what my benefits are in two different planes. Unbelievable.
So is the, is the two percent the only recommendation? Or is there, are there varying degrees of potential impact that we can make? I mean.
Well, so the two percent, it's a combination.
Go to that slide that he's referring to on dollars.
So the two percent across the board, the adjustment to minimum and the adjustments for time and position are three kind of strategies that in combination get us to where we need to be in terms of salary. So we could have come to you and said, you know, we need to make these adjustments to minimum. However, we are using that two percent COLA to get people to minimum. So it's not three different figures collectively. It gets us to where employees need to be. So even if we say, well, maybe we'll do a lower COLA, but that just means that we'll probably need to do more in adjustments to minimum. So it's all collectively helping us implement the plan. And we came up with a plan that we felt was fair and affordable, you know, to implement.
This gets us to about an average, like closing that negative five percent gap to maybe closer to zero.
And addresses compression.
And addresses the compression, which is the bigger, seems like the bigger issue because it's wider.
So we were trying to, again, address the various issues that have come up through these three strategies.
But if other cities, you know, they do their two percent adjustment, then are we still behind by five percent or?
No, because people, some people are getting more than just the two percent. Some people are below minimum, so they're getting money to get them there. And then some are getting the adjustment for time and position. So overall, you're going to move forward in terms of the spec. I want to make one closing comment and I promise I won't say anything else. You've been presented with the opportunity to phase this in over two years. I would ask you and implore you to try to do it in October, one year. Here's why. Number one, there's some certainly uncertainty out there in year two and three because you're going to be going through collective bargaining on police and fire. Number two, you're in the midst of a general election, so there could be some turnover on the council. Employee pay may not be a priority for those that may come onto the council after the election. This has been an undertaking that's long overdue. The employees are experiencing, I think, some degree of anxiety, wondering what the results are and will they implement it? I think, and I don't know your fund balance and the finances, I haven't reviewed that. But I'm saying if all things being equal, resources are available, then I think the commitment ought to be to move forward and try to do it in one year and move on to something else. That's just my two cents.
Sounds good, okay.
Well, I would agree with that. I would agree with that one hundred percent. If all things being equal, we could do it. And so I think, you know, that's a challenge that this group's going to have. Can you put that slide back on? Because, oh, it's five o'clock. So I know I saw this presentation five times, but I'm not, I'm still confused. What if we reverse it? What if we do the implementation first so that we target the folks that are quote unquote hurting and then do the two percent in year two? What does that look like? Can you get that back?
Yeah.
Oh, and here's something very important that they explained. So if you don't do the two, any percent, whether it's one or one and a half or two or three, then the cost to implement is higher than it is if you do it, okay? Because if you do it two percent, they're reducing it from that overall cost for implementation. So we're not double dipping. In other words, we're not saying this is what we need to get to minimum and midpoint. And by the way, two percent of this, if you do two percent, we're taking those dollars off of here. So there's a balance.
The two percent was calculated first and then the adjustments to minimum. So the two percent would come first. And like Roy said, it's not, it's not.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have one item. Mr. Cortinas, are you ready? You'd step to the, well, you can do it, what do you want to do it today? Set yourself up.